Can I talk to your kids about the dangers of vaping? You gotta get it trending.
No, you're doing it wrong.
Can we talk?
Yeah, what's up?
Visit TalkAboutVaping.org for tips on when and how to have the vape talk.
Yeah. It's gonna be another video tonight.
Happy anniversary.
Okay, it's five o'clock, we'll get started. I'll call the order of the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, November 17th, 2025. I'd ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Higgins?
Here.
Kirchdorfer?
Here.
Knipfer?
Here.
Marks?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
And Van Campen?
Here, thank you. Item three, approval of November 3rd, 2025 Village Board meeting minutes, if correct. Staff recommendation, motion to approve, Tom and Amanda. Questions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, public appearances, comments, communications, items for discussion and/or possible action. A presentation from Nathan's week regarding Eagle Scout project completed in Prairie Mountain Cemetery. Come up. Gonna pull the microphone up close.
This is just a follow-up of the project.
A little louder, speaking to the mic, please.
This is just a follow-up of the project.
Great.
And it was cleaning the headstones and leveling them. That was the Eagle project. And before we started, I gave the instructions to the volunteers to clean the headstones with the D2 solution. And for lifting the headstones and leveling them, we lifted, we had like two people up. And we had two people up and they lifted up, lifted it with a headstone jack, which is kind of like a pry bar. And then we put aggregate, aggregate underneath it, which is kind of like gravel. And after that, we set it down and we packed dirt around it. And that was the process, the orange thing that you see there is the headstone jack. And we, yeah, had more than two people up to lift headstones up. And the D2 solution, we had scrub brushes and scrub brushes and spray bottles for the D2 solution. And the D2 breaks down lichen and mold on stone. And the, and these are the before and afters. So we scrubbed it with the D2 and then we rinsed it with water. And, yeah, we, you can see it's a lot better. And it's a lot more clean and clear. And there were some veterans that we, we tried to get all of the headstones, but we couldn't. We ran out of the aggregate. But we had no shortage of D2 solution, so that was good, I guess. And the final counts, we had 47 headstones leveled and straightened. We had 131 headstones cleaned and we had 22 volunteers and 135 hours worked totals, total. I want to thank you guys so much for the opportunity to help make Oregon a better place.
Great, great project. Just really nice that you got that many people to come out and a great effort. And I'm sure the families of those that might be there appreciated that. Other comments from the board?
I just want to say thanks for doing this. This is a great project and it looks really good. We're really grateful to have you doing this. Thank you.
I'd say the same thing. I really appreciate all the work that you do. And for that matter, I'm a fan of the Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts as a child myself and never put the amount of effort in that it takes to become an Eagle Scout. And you should be very proud of that accomplishment.
I was just gonna say, you should be really proud of yourself. This is no small feat, 135 hours is significant. And the work that you've done to help keep us informed has been really helpful, so huge congrats to you.
Okay, thank you for coming in. Okay, item four B, presentation from Hillcrest Bible Church regarding a potential future proposal of annexation of approximately two and a half acres from the town of Dunn, related to a potential future facility expansion located at near 752 East Netherwood Street. This is not an actual item, just informational. Please state your name and who you represent for the record.
Daniel Hale, Hillcrest Bible Church.
And Renee Shervin, Hillcrest Bible Church.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, I do see we have the graphics here. And we are seeking your approval to annex two and a half acres east of the current property, which is on the corner of Netherwood and Highway 14, as the aerial image shows there. We currently own the property to the west, which is where the church currently resides. We have a contract in place to purchase this land contingent on approval for annexation. The additional land would be used for a parking lot to support the church. If you've been through there on Sunday mornings, you'll notice many congressional people are parking at La Petite or on the road of Netherwood. And we continue to see growth in the church. And so we're just trying to be good neighbors and support our continued growth. That's the extent of the request at this point.
Questions, board members? Amanda?
This is more actually for Lauren. I saw in the packet that there is not a requirement for people to be on our water sewer. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the requirement to connect to water and sewer is contingent on those utilities being available in reasonable proximity. And this particular facility would fall outside of that radius.
Got it. I didn't know what that qualifier was, so, yeah, okay, cool. Sounds good.
Don't get me wrong, we would love to be on water and sewer. Any else? Okay, I don't see any objections here, so I think it's on to the next step.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks for coming in. Four C, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Anyone here for public comments? Public comments, hearing none. Item five, approval of vouchers in the amount of $1,105,469.97. Looking for motion to approve. Amanda and Paige, questions, comments? Hearing none, it's a roll call vote. We have a motion by Amanda, second by Paige.
Knipfer?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Van Campen?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Marks?
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda. Staff recommendation, motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented, just six A. Motion of Paige and Tim. Questions? Hearing none, a motion by Paige, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven, reports of committees, items for discussion and/or possible action. A planning commission, one. Resolution number 25-52, resolution approving a certified survey map, adjusting lot lines for 1079, 1065, 1035, and 1029 Maryhill Drive, which is lots 176, 177, 180, 181 of Greenview Preserve. Applicant is VH Greenview Preserve LLC. Commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve. Amanda and Tim. Questions on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 72, resolution number 25-53, a resolution approving a certified survey map combining four lots located at 354 North Main Street, 333 and 335 Sodden Drive, applicant Oregon Property Investment LLC. Commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve. Amanda? Tim? Questions on this item? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three, ordinance number 25-15, an ordinance permitting the official zoning map for property located at 336 and 354 North Main Street, 333 and 335 Sodden Drive, and 150 East Lincoln Street to the industrial zoning district and planned development, overlay zoning district, approving a general development plan for institutional residential development, senior housing. Applicant Oregon Property Investment LLC. Planning commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented.
To clarify, it's institutional, not industrial.
Thank you.
For the record.
Thank you for that correction. Tim, I saw your hand up. And Amanda? Questions on this item? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item four, conditionally use permitting agreement for offset parking lot use located at 133 East Lincoln Street, applicant Oregon Property Investment LLC. Commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Tim and Tom. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for coming in, sir. Item B, park board, one, final design and authorization to bid for the Gary Dish Park Improvement Project. Park board and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Paige and Lynn. I'm not sure, is this the first time we've seen this, or?
I feel like it's not, but.
Well.
I think we discussed it under the CPI.
Okay. So, questions or comments?
So excited.
Tim?
A question, just what did we determine in terms of like bathroom facilities for this park?
As of right now, the plan does not include bathroom facilities. One thing that we have done at other parks and soccer has done a great job of is coordinating portable restroom facilities, if you will. And I think that's likely the direction that we would recommend going at this point, to get a feel for how much demand there is and whether that is suitable. One nice thing about this is restrooms would be, I wouldn't say simple to install as a second part of the project, but they would be relatively uncomplicated just based on where the water is likely going to come in on the north side of that property. So it wouldn't be wildly difficult to go back if we wanted to install them later. The other thing to keep in mind, of course, is cost. Restroom facilities add quite a lot to a project, probably looking at something like $200,000 for a building. So, yeah, yeah, just kind of keeping it small at this point as of right now and trying those portable facilities would be probably what we'd recommend.
Makes sense. I guess I do support this project. I do have one concern, I guess, too, when we consider parks projects like this in the future, especially with a playing field involved. One concern I have here is that if you have two soccer teams, you're gonna have at least 40 cars show up for an individual game. If you're running a tournament, that means that you're running 80 cars. You know, there's, this is gonna be parking lot all the way down Pleasant Oak and all the way through the whole area. I don't know that, in approving it, that that was, that all the neighbors knew, realized what that parking's gonna be like on those occasions when there's a lot of soccer going on. And there was also some discussion that they may run two fields diagonally here, that it could actually hold a smaller field. So now you're talking up to 160 cars? So, just, it gets to be really, I've driven through some of these soccer tournaments and you're out in neighborhoods and you're turning around in people's driveways and so forth. But we do need to keep that in mind as we look at these projects in the future.
Amanda?
Yeah, so with that in mind, I was wondering, is there any way to add just even a few more spaces in that bump out? Instead of having the path curve like that, like to the south, could we have like three more spots or something a little extra there? I don't know, maybe we're too far in the process, but seven spots.
The parking stalls are already four, that's all.
Oh, sorry, I didn't even know that, okay. All right, well, I don't know, maybe future project, we'll see.
I will just address this for the specific situation because I've been quite involved in the discussions around this. So the neighborhood is well aware that parking will be something that they will see an increase in when this park comes online. All of the parking stalls for this park were fairly well established when most of these lots were bought, as well as the park, right, was a part of the neighborhood plan. So I don't think this is going to come as any surprise to folks. And one of the other things that we've talked to the neighbors about a lot is, I've said this a lot now, I don't think a lot of people are tailgating for soccer games, so they're in and they're out, right? So at most, you're seeing a large influx of cars for an hour, two hours. Maybe all day Saturday on a Fall Fury Day or on a, you know, multiple tournament day. But the hope would be here that this would be a park where people would come, watch their kids, play in the playground, get back in their car, head off to the next thing. So the neighborhood is, has been a part of a lot of discussions about parking. And the village has done a really nice job of helping them to understand that, you know, if they're having an event and they want the parking in front of their home to be cleared a little bit, that, you know, advance notice on things like that is always helpful. The village will always be a good partner to them in trying to help navigate some of that. So in this specific instance, I feel like the communication around parking has been discussed a little bit.
I can also add that, so we live right in this area, purchased the lot three years ago. We were told about this plan, like when we purchased the lot. So I also feel like many of those homeowners in this area, when they bought the land or the home, were very aware of this coming.
Amanda, you?
Yeah, sorry, another question, unrelated. I know that some of the kids in the neighborhood use this park for sledding right now. And I just want to make sure that if, that after this is done, it looks like they're still downhill. I just don't know how steep they are. I don't know if that's, how much are we leveling it out? Would that still be a good function in the winter?
I don't think we're leveling at all.
I would say that's exactly as apparent where my mind went when I first saw this design. There is a lot of fill being added to this park to meet ADA requirements and to cover up essentially the bedrock that it is built on. So those contours do look like you're kind of dropping off a cliff. Of course, that wouldn't be safe. I believe that it will be less steep than the current sledding hill over by the South Stand Pipe. And it should be still a very good park for that activity.
Excellent, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, great, we have a motion by Paige, second by Lynn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Public Works and Utilities Committee, want revisions to the Village of Oregon Snow and Ice Program policies. Committee and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Paige and Tim. This was in the packet and I know some members have been involved with this at the Public Works Committee. Did you have anything to add, Lauren, or?
I don't think so, I'm happy to take any questions.
Tom?
I guess I wanted to speak to, a lot of this is applying a policy that's already in place, that we've had for some time. The difference is, is that we're going to be applying that a policy and it's likely to result in complaints. I think, you know, you have to ask yourself the question of why did we have people or staff not necessarily using the policy as it was originally written? And it was almost probably certainly due to responses to complaints that people receive. There will be complaints about this. I, one of the more affected areas on this plan is the plowing of cul-de-sacs. I live in a cul-de-sac. It's been very convenient to have that whole cul-de-sac plowed early, but I understand if, as long as I can get out and I have a lane to get through, you know, I'm gonna be okay with it. I understand the changes. Not everybody will be as accepting and as understanding as I am on this. So I think we ought to, you know, brace up for it. One other question I had is, is there was two depths of snow that were discussed within the policy. One was two inches where this policy, it sounds like that's when we start to apply the policy. But then all the estimates are based on four inches. So if it goes over four inches, so if we get a foot of snow, we're not gonna make the timelines that are discussed in this. It's just, it's just not realistic to think we're gonna get a foot of snow cleared in 48 hours in some of these circumstances. So again, there's a very narrow band that this policy actually speaks to in relationship to actual timelines. I did, so when the snow is less than two inches, what happens? Good, it's not really addressed in the policy.
Sure. So typically, we rely very heavily on kind of pre-salting things. We try to get out there ahead of things, especially if we think it's just gonna be a dusting, because a lot of times that will really take care of the problem, particularly on well-traveled roads where people will drive over the salt and really kind of spread it around. Then it's generally a judgment call, essentially. So Nick will watch how the snowfall progresses overnight and call in maybe one or two folks if he thinks that really this is just something that we need to hit major roads and local side streets. But it's much more of a hands-on, kind of as-you-go sort of situation with those.
Amanda and Tim?
So, you know, I know we have policies in place for a reason, but I, I'm thinking in particular of a guy that used to live somewhere up, you know, down the street from me, that was in a motorized wheelchair. And I used to see him in the dead of winter navigating the sidewalks to go downtown for an errand or whatever. And I don't see him anymore, I don't know what happened, but it just always makes me think about, you know, accessibility. And if, if we know that someone uses sidewalks daily and needs to have them cleared in less than the 96 hours that we promised, is that something you'll work with people about, like if there's a particular need in a particular area?
Yes, that's already something that we've started thinking about. One excellent comment, actually from the committee meeting that I believe Tom made, is not all of one type of surface are created equal. In particular, paths. Some paths are recreational in nature, some are far more necessary to get from here to there. And so what we're gonna be doing is talking to folks, in particular the school district, talking about how their students get in every day and what they really see as far as a need, looking at those downtown sidewalks, essentially evaluating this program and seeing what works, what doesn't. And certainly, if people have accessibility concerns that they want to talk to us about, absolutely give us a call and we can work with them on that. Thank you.
Tim?
Yeah, one of the things I'd like to ask everybody at this table to do is let the policy run. We might hear some complaints, we might hear some people that don't necessarily like it. But, you know, when we had a new mowing policy a year or two ago, we were immediately in here with exceptions and wanting to change it. And I don't want to do that. A big part of what we're doing here is taking some snow removal out of eligibility for overtime. And that's a significant cost savings that we're gonna need to meet in this winter and in coming winters. If there are things that are inconvenient for people that we want to consider for next winter, fine, we're happy to hear those. But we're not gonna like do 180s on this policy. And I'm hoping I have the support of everybody here that we can stand behind that. Thanks.
Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to expand on what Lauren mentioned in relationship to the different paths and work. One of the things we, in the committee, is that there are bike paths and routes, and especially as we see the bike paths extend up County MM along that route, where we'll see people coming down to the middle school. There's gonna be, those will actually be transportation routes, they're not exercise routes. So like a path in, say, in JC Park where we're not having ballgames in the winter and you're not gonna see those cleared in, you know, a few hours kinds of thing. But on the other hand, you've got somebody who's got to get to school, somebody who's got to get to work, and they're using those as transportation. And it actually is, might be discussion for the Transportation Committee. You know, which bike path, you might want to designate differences in bike paths. You know, this is, this is not, just as we have different kinds of streets, maybe there are bike paths that are different kinds of designations. So we're aware of that and we realize we'll have to have some flexibility within the policy. It was discussed at the committee. But at this time, we're just, if it's a, if the five in the plowing schedule, it's gonna be a five this year. And if it's, if it's a four, then we're gonna plow it like it's four, so.
Phil, can I add a clarification? Because I think I probably muddied the waters a little bit there. To Tim's point, I think, and to Tom's as well, what we're talking about is not, these non-overtime eligible routes go to absolutely the back of the line. It is simply removing them from that overtime eligibility. So we are certainly interested in finding out, once our day starts... So we are certainly interested in finding out, once our day starts, you know, what routes can we, once everybody's done with the major streets, what routes need to be kind of gotten after. We don't intend to say, well, 96 hours, we are going to use every speck of that 96 hours. That's a very conservative policy. We're just taking it out such that we are not calling people in at midnight and we are not stretching our staff completely out, and we're working within those hours when we are fully staffed and do have the manpower. That's kind of where we can, we can start to apply the policy consistently, but still figure out what does work as far as getting our transportation routes cleared, getting our downtown sidewalks cleared, all of those areas that are extremely important, but that we're, we're trying to apply this better to.
I just have to say, this is one of the reasons why I think I would encourage anyone on the board to ride along with a snowplow operator, because when you read this policy, when you talk about these overtimes, this is not just someone driving a really big truck around. This is a really intense activity to do for eight hours straight. There is a lot to be watching, there's a lot going on, and I think that making sure that we're keeping those folks safe and really respecting the time that they're giving us and honoring the work that they're doing, I think that's really important. For anyone out there reading this, I will assure you that it is not a job that we could all just do. It is really technical and very difficult to do, so I think having a policy that they can adhere to that keeps them safe is, is really well applauded.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, we have a motion by Paige, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item A, unfinished business under further discussion and/or possible action, a 2026 Village of Oregon municipal budget. I will then now open the public hearing. Any resident or taxpayer of the Village of Oregon shall have an opportunity to be heard on proposed 2026 municipal budget. Clarice, you got it? Nothing, huh? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing and invite other staff comments on this. You said it all, or?
My memo, I had a memo in the package, just a couple of minor changes to balance out a couple of smaller items with final health insurance numbers and open enrollment selections, but overall, pretty minor changes, so it's ready to be approved.
Okay. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion for Resolution Number 25-47, adoption of the 2026 Village of Oregon Municipal Budget. I think, Tim and Amanda, questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oops, sorry about that. Let's see. Item B, Resolution Number 25-48, adopting a 2026 employee wage schedule and setting the 2026 wages for current employees. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Paige and Tim. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Resolution Number 25-49, a resolution amending sewer service charges for the Village of Oregon Sewer Utility to be effective December 31, 2025. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Tim and Tom. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Resolution Number 25-55, amending the village organizational chart to incorporate changes made in the 2026 budget. Amanda and Tim? Questions on this item? Okay, we have a motion by Amanda, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Resolution Number 25-51, a resolution approving an amended and restated professional services agreement with State Building Wisconsin LLC and adopting an updated municipal fee schedule related to the building inspection services and related municipal permits. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Tom, Amanda? Questions, Tom? And then, Tim?
I just wanted to comment on, we've just gone through and adopted one, two, three, four, five, and our sixth resolution in like moments. These didn't just happen, and don't think that this was like a quick decision or a quick discussion and we're just rubber stamping things. This was hours and hours of work, many presentations by Martin, a lot of staff time went into preparing budgets in the individual departments. This has been scrutinized, this was looked at, these are, this is a fruition of a tremendous amount of work, and I want to compliment all of the staff, all the administrative staff, all the people who worked on this budget and the hours that went into it, and thank them for their time and efforts.
Okay. Tim, your comment?
I have a question, and I'm not sure I'm on the right issue for this, but a couple of years ago, we had a house blow up, a house under construction blow up because there was a gas leak. My understanding is the 880 building on North Main Street, when the fire department went in there recently, found, I want to say, 10 or more gas leaks. Is that part of the mission of the building inspector to check for gas leaks?
We're getting a little off agenda, but I'll maybe...
And I guess if not...
Accept a short answer from someone, or would you rather not do that?
Whether or not it's part of the, the job of the building inspector, that's the question, and that would be relevant, so.
Is that safe build?
Right. Is that their job?
Yeah. Is that part of their job to check for?
Because, I mean, all of the documents that they read through, it said you'll follow the normal procedures and...
I guess I'm not sure how to answer that question, but we can, we can find an answer.
There's a listing in the packet of all the stuff that...
But it's not that specific. It's not specific to that. It's like to ensure that the mechanical systems are operating as expected, things along those lines. And I guess my question is more about is, do we walk through a building before it's approved for occupancy with a gas detector?
No, I don't think so. Some of these inspections are done virtually.
Yeah, I'm not sure, too, either, where, on specific buildings, where like fire inspection versus building inspection falls in. So, I mean, it's a question that we can, we can find an answer to.
Yeah, I guess I'd like an answer to that. I don't, I don't think it should stop approval of this, but I guess I'd like us to be better at that.
Okay. Anyone else on this item?
I was just going to go back to add that those watching, kind of to what Tom was saying, a lot of conversations have been had outside of these meetings, and poor Martin has taken so many emails on this particular issue for me, so I just wanted to add, kind of back to what was Tom was saying. I want to make sure that you all know where, there's lots of work that goes into us just kind of going through a lot of these motions tonight, including this one in particular.
Okay. Any else? Okay, we have a motion by Tom, second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, new business, none. Item 10, reports of village officers, department heads, consultants, this for information only. A is the village administrator report. Questions? B, police chief report, notice of revisions made to internal affairs policy in a mini-release dated November 11, 2025 regarding school bus versus pedestrian crash. Anything to add on that, chief? No? Item C, village engineer, consultant report, monthly report for October 25 related to ice water upgrades project from town and country engineering. That's some nice drone photos in there, those are always fun.
I really like those.
Yeah, me too.
It's fun to watch the progression, so.
Nice to get.
Nice job.
They're also on the website, if you want to tell.
Oh, they are on the website. Okay. Item 11, announcements in miscellaneous business, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events in miscellaneous business. Start with staff or department heads, any announcements?
I'd just like to note the library will be closed on Friday for staff in service, so if you hear anything about that, that's why.
Okay. Board members. Tom?
Just note that the data on the public works meeting is different. We're meeting on the 18th tomorrow, not the 25th, as noted on the calendar.
Okay. Thank you. Lynn?
I just wanted to take a moment. The Village Outreach Program's video series is in progress. We are three videos in, and for those of you watching who are interested in seeing some of those, they're on the Village website as well as the Village Facebook page. Wanted to thank all of the board members who participated, appreciated the time and attention you took, and then of course, a huge shout out to Candy for publishing those for us and having a schedule and just being generally amazing and on top of it. Thank you.
Also on Instagram, too.
Oh, and Instagram.
Instagram, wow. I'm really...
We're finally in the 2000s.
Speak for yourself. Excuse me. Okay, any other announcements? All right. Next is 2026 Village Holidays observed and Village Board meeting schedule, staff recommendation, motion to approve. Tim and Paige. Question on that? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11B, future agenda items. This item gives Village Board members the opportunity to place a topic on a future agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Anyone? Tim?
I would like to have a resolution at our next meeting to recognize our fire department for their ISO rating of two.
Okay, can you write such a...
I would be happy to write it, and I'd like to invite the fire chief to receive it.
Okay. Without objection? Okay. Anybody else? Lynn?
For the record, is it helpful if we officially ask for a review of the building permit process around, building permit slash fire department interaction on gas leaks, just so that it's for the record?
Yep. We can add that. No objection? Anybody else? Okay. Item 12. I just want to make sure I understand this, so we're going to discuss this item, and if we take the staff recommendation to approve that without changes, then we will do that and that'll be the end of the meeting. But if we want to talk about the specific terms, that will be negotiation, so then we will go into closed session. Everyone follow? Questions? Okay. Item 12, business, excuse me. Business under further discussion and/or possible action, a financial analysis and terms for tax incremental financing assistance related to the Oregon Main Apartments project, which is a 57-unit senior affordable housing project proposed by MSP Real Estate Incorporated at 169 203 and 215 South Main Street. One, Resolution Number 25-50, a resolution expressing the Village Board's support for the Oregon Main Street Apartments project, and stating anticipated terms for tax incremental financing assistance. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. We have a motion by Amanda, and a second by Paige. Questions, comments?
I just want to be clear what the recommendation is, because we have the request that was made by the, by MSP, but we also then have a staff recommendation based on Eller's evaluation. I guess I'd like just a clarification or a statement of that.
Well, we, the, if we adopt this, then we're adopting Eller's recommendation.
That's correct, and MSP has at least verbally agreed to the recommendation that we put forward.
Good.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, I support this. I think that the request of the TIF and then the other pieces, the Affordable Housing Fund and the impact fees, I appreciated taking those apart and really giving us the recommendation piece by piece. I was specifically concerned about the Affordable Housing Fund. I think draining that for this one project is a little dangerous, and I really don't want it to deter others from potentially bringing more affordable housing to the village. So I appreciated being able to look at them each separately and getting that recommendation.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? Hearing none. We have a motion by Amanda, pardon me, second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then we bring this to item 13. Our business is concluded without objection. We are adjourned.
Paige, does that mean you got...